I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Killdoble Hills Board of Commissioners, thank you all for being here, it's so great to see everybody's faces. Here's not seeing everybody's faces. Would you stand and join me for the playfully?
Playfully, this is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we simply do as we start our meeting, we'll have a moment of silence, but wanted to mention that we, I hope that you all keep the Quidley family in your thoughts. As you know, we recently lost Mary Quidley, a longtime town clerk, and we've just learned that of the passing of her sister Susan Quidley. So please keep Ashley Carroll there, family and all their friends in your thoughts, and of course, all the folks in Ukraine. Join me for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Board, we have an agenda before you.
I'm going to approve the agenda as President.
We've got a motion from DJ, I'll second it, and a second round here. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries unanimously. We have an agenda. Let's see here. Public hearings, I did want to mention that although we're doing public hearings tonight, we've got a, we've got a public, of course, we have a public comment period, but we also have a bigger public forum for all sorts of topics coming up Wednesday, April 27th. So the first public hearing tonight is about proposed permanent closure of a portion of West 8th Street. I imagine Casey's gonna walk us through this.
Thank you, Eric. There will be two public hearings tonight, conducted by the Killdoble Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules and procedure will be applied to these particular hearings. Public notice of the hearing was published in a newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards and website. That meets or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has also been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk is going to be recording all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements are also going to be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing, and shall also be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking tonight during the public hearing, of course, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issues being discussed in the hearing, and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group, or if your statement has been submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone since your statement, so that your statement is going to be taken. No debates during the public hearing, and when coming forward, please do identify yourself by giving your name and address for the record. First public hearing will now come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Killdoble Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: a proposed permanent closure of a portion of West 8th Street. We do not have anyone signed up for, on the sheet, on the sign-in sheet, so I'll ask from the audience, is there any, are any folks who desire to speak about this public hearing? I'll turn it over to the board.
All right. You guys have briefed on this, just briefly for the audience that might not be up to speed on this one. This is a little piece of, short piece of road, the dead end on the far west end of 8th Street, the town, so the town, the boundary between Killdoble Hills and Aggset is the middle of that street, and this piece of property that is doing nobody any good the way it is now, and we're gonna divide it with them, and they're gonna have half, we're gonna have half. At least that's what's proposed. Were there any other comments or questions that you all had? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion. This is supported by staff and have been, I'll make a motion of approval that the proposed permanent closure to the portion of West 8th Street, I guess we close as presented. Excellent. We have a motion on the floor.
Check.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Appreciate your attention to that.
All right. The second public hearing will now come to order, and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Killdoble Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: water system development fees. Of course, that's in the agenda, won't fully explain. No one has signed up, so I will call from the audience at this point. Would anyone like to speak on this matter?
All right. Again, for the benefit of folks who don't follow all these things, this is a periodic, big study about how we pay for our water service, everything from hookups to fees and all that sort of thing. It's extremely complicated, and has been researched at a great degree to figure out how to do this the most responsible way. It's something that you need to collect the right amount of money to make sure that it lasts, $37 million worth of stuff, and we know how long all of it lasts and when it needs to be replaced. And so we factored all those things in, and gave up this big master plan, which was presented to us a couple of months ago. Once again, I'm gonna turn that on for you. Nothing new since we talked about this last, but this is your one more opportunity to speak up, otherwise looking for a motion to put this in motion. I hope I never said that before. Worse than my dad jokes.
I'm trying to hold back.
You've walked into that at some point by now.
I'll make a motion to recommend to amend the Ocean Acres wastewater flow allocation.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second.
Just to clarify, that would be the water system development fee.
Right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Casey, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. To your pictures. All right, this is the usual way we start off a meeting. We have two, two public comment periods, one here at the beginning and one here at the end, and you can talk about anything you like. Keep it to three minutes per individual, five minutes for a group. And a sign-up sheet in place. Our good friend Eddie Goodrich has signed up. There he is.
Good evening. My name's Eddie Goodrich, and I submitted a while back, and I've done much to change zoning on a parcel behind Walgreens and Killdoble Hills. And I understand now more about the concerns of the neighbors, as well as the concerns of staff, and the concerns of the planning board, and quite frankly, they're all right. The planning board was right, and their decision, the planning department's correct, and theirs. And the commercial zoning is too broad. So what I would like to do is, I would like to ask you all tonight to not schedule a public hearing on the rezoning application. And I would like to ask that you, I delivered to you guys from the University of North Carolina School of Government, what's called conditional zoning, which was a very popular tool developed in the 90s through 2001, which allows the town to approve rezoning, but limit what can be done. And it's called conditional zoning, it's done all over the North Carolina. And what can be done to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors, as well as the town, is that the rezoning could be what's called a commercial conditional zoning, which would only allow multifamily, which is a big need in their county, multifamily housing, the land cost is about one-fourth of what it is for a single-family home, building cost is tremendously less, the infrastructure is less. And I'd like to ask you to, if you will, as well as not schedule a public hearing, but to instruct planning and the town attorney to work with me over the next couple of weeks, and come back to you on the 26th with a plan to implement commercial conditional zoning on this particular property, and some other areas possibly in town of Killdoble Hills. It will help, it will help the housing problem that we have. And we've been dealing with that, this happened, this started a long time ago, and it's gonna take a long time to fix it. So my request is simply that you not schedule a public hearing. And I don't know, do they have any questions in there? I don't know that this is a question session, but that's all I need to say, I think.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Yeah, we usually don't go back and forth during public comment, but we definitely hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Anyone else? Public comment? Any topic whatsoever? Three, two, one. All right, we're close. Public comment, and move on to respond to public comment. Just briefly, I guess we will say, I think that the staff and everybody were all aware that, you know, everyone's pretty much aligned on trying to figure out ways that we can help encourage workforce housing and be creative about it. So we look forward to discussions to come.
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing that's very, very critical, you know, the need for workforce housing. My question would be, first off, we, we're gonna, that's off the consent agenda now, correct?
Yes.
And that issue's off of that.
Yes, sir, I just won't, I won't read that until we get there.
Right, okay. And, you know, I've talked to a lot of people that are in that neighborhood, and it seemed like when you talked to them and you took that commercial part away, there wasn't a problem, because they realized it's a critical need. So I think that's exactly what we need to do. We need to have planning staff come up with something that will address letting that be done in that area. So I'm all aboard about that.
We can explore what possible restrictions and things like that, so that it will always be.
Yeah, so we'll wait for Bannon and Casey to come back with something.
And I'd like to just ask too, if staff could take a look at restrictions in terms of short-term rentals versus long-term rentals?
Yes.
I know what I'm seeing, I live in the area where there's a lot of multifamily houses. I go by there a lot. There's a lot of multifamily housing out there that is definitely short-term rentals.
Yeah, it definitely.
There are people getting out of the cars on the weekends with suitcases. It's definitely happening. So I would, if we're gonna solve a problem, let's really solve it. And, you know, if we're gonna make some decisions this big, you know.
Right, yeah, more broadly, beyond reconstruction, you know, have to be incentivized in the other direction. What can we offer in trade for, you know, long-term instead of short-term? So great, I'm really glad those conversations gone forward. I look forward to working on that between now and then. Yeah. All right. Next item is introductions, presentation time. We're just, we're just, we're going to two golf carts here.
Yes.
I hear we have some of the motion Atlantic rentals.
Yes, there you are.
Couldn't see behind the.
Tell us all about golf carts, if we don't know. Yeah, I'm looking for the clicker thing as well. Waiting on Meredith. Cool.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Chris and Ben from Ocean Atlantic Rentals and Outer Banks Golf Carts, and we'll, there'll be a little bit more about us as we go through the presentation, but thanks for the time tonight, for sure. And I wanted to show on the first slide, the Facebook image from the Killdoble Hills Fire Department, and it's a year ago in May that our Killdoble Hills location, the location that we started the business in in '79, not me, but Greg and Eden, that store had an electrical fire at 3:00 in the morning, and the Killdoble Hills Fire Department came and they saved the day. And I just don't know how much you hear, you probably hear the negatives, I would imagine, but I just wanna really praise them today. I've gotten to know Chief Tilly a little bit through the town and through, since that process, and we're really happy to say, I mean, I thought I was gonna come at 4:00 in the morning to shattered glass doors, and, you know, these guys just doing what they have to do to get in there, and just the professionalism. I mean, they drilled out the lock. I had a new lock on by 5:00 PM the day of the fire. They kept the fire to probably a four-by-six-foot area. They saved our butts, and we made it through last summer with some soot and some new flooring that came in this winter. But, I mean, I just, I just really wanted to take a moment before I get started on golf carts to say how valuable they are, and, you know, what a great, what a great service and first responders we have in our town. Thank you.
Totally.
I'm gonna hit the slide one here. I'm talking about golf carts in KDH, of course, and we're gonna talk about, mostly about considering this in our neighborhood. So I'm not talking at this moment about going to the beach and back, I just wanna kinda frame this in the, in the direction that I'm coming from. Chris and Ben, company started in '79 right here in KDH, and, you know, we are available to the board at any time about golf carts, or about renting beach chairs, or bikes, or just being a small business here. But we're glad to be here, and that's our flagship location, I know you all know, on the bypass. Why am I here? We're just getting tons of requests, and we have for about four years, as we are a club car golf cart dealer, about neighborhood use of the carts. And KDH is just not really favorable to a standard, regular old golf cart, and I'm gonna talk more about that later. But LSVs are something that are allowed anywhere in the state of North Carolina under certain circumstances, but I'm talking about the folks who live in our neighborhoods, mostly on the west side. We, of course, have out-of-towners who are coming here every week with their campers and everything, and they're coming with golf carts to our area as well. We have a lot of sister towns and neighboring areas that are all allowing carts in some capacities or no capacities, but it's confusing for someone who's coming here. And what I'm proposing today, and I hope I'm kind of turning over in a turnkey idea way, is a way for the town to have a revenue with golf carts, instead of just, you know, deregulating something. I would wanna close on that thought with, you know, we're all looking for ways to spend less gas, we're all looking for a greener future, things that are good for our community with less carbon, and I think this speaks to that as well. I wanna make a quick differentiation, and my slides are overlapping a little bit, but we need to understand that there's something called a low-speed vehicle. That's the golf cart on the left there. It goes 20 to 25. The state of North Carolina basically says what an LSV is, and it's got a bigger motor and a bunch of safety features on it, like seat belts and stuff like that. I'll give you a better list of that later. But the one on the right, what's cut off there is a PTV golf cart, is basically the way we say a standard old golf cart. And you can see it goes slower, it goes 14 to 19 miles an hour. The top speed that the state says it can go is about 19. The cart on the left in the big picture has a license plate on it, that's one of my rental LSVs, and those, you know, they have a registration. You go to a mechanic, like you do with your car, you get it inspected, you make, they make sure the horn works, and all that good stuff. For my rental business, especially in KDH, that's been the best thing for me to offer in the golf cart realm, because it is, it is legal in the state on roads 35 and under. I just kinda wanna say, like, the top picture there with the couple sitting in it by the old truck, that's an LSV, and then the whole row of them below are regular golf carts. I think it's just kinda tough for law enforcement and for everybody to identify the difference, and the license plate is the big difference. But under the skin, it's a different cart with a bigger motor. Your local neighborhood use request that I'm hearing, they come in, or they call us, and they, they say, hey, I live behind Lowe's, and I wanna be able to go to the grocery store, and I wanna be able to go to Lowe's. And right now, they really, only in those neighborhoods can do it with an LSV. I'll pop through these real quick, but an LSV, like I've already said, is legal. The thing I don't like about them, and the thing I discourage heavily with our rental program, is you can cross the bypass in one. And I think that's just a bad thing. I think being near the bypass in a little vehicle of any kind is a bad idea, and I think you all know why. The cons of an LSV, it's very cost-restrictive for most people who live, who I think, back in first flight, the average person, I lived there at one time, they're $2,000 to $5,000 more than a regular golf cart that you'd get somewhere else. So it's very cost-prohibitive when someone comes in and asks us about getting one. So I wanted to mention that. And then again, just kind of the hassle of yearly registration, putting on a trailer, going to the mechanic, getting all the registration stuff done that you get done to your car right now for a golf cart, to me, is prohibitive to a lot of folks. I think an LSV is overkill for our neighborhood use because of the faster, faster motors, and then the, you know, the state restriction stuff that makes it more heavy-duty. Out-of-town folks, they're coming into our area every week, I'm selling them seat bolts, seat belts, side mirrors, stuff that they break getting here, and it's hundreds. You guys see them coming over the bridge. They're basically coming here using golf carts from another state, or maybe North Carolina, on our roads, assuming that they can do what they can do at home. So I'm encouraging the board to, to get in front of this, because that's just a problem, it's not gonna go away. People bring their surfboards, their bikes, everything, they assume they can just use things wrongfully that way. Again, I'll talk about revenue here in a minute, but there's an opportunity here, and I think it's an opportunity of, if we were to say the town allowed in certain areas standard golf carts with some safety features, we have a public education opportunity, and we also have a revenue opportunity. This is why it's confusing to folks in some ways, is there are Currituck Club, closest to us, Duck and Southern Shores, and these other places, that the county or the towns are allowing regular old carts to putz around in your neighborhood and go to your neighbors, or go to a Lowe's, or something like that. Ben, I think this is a good time, if you don't mind handing over, we put together a packet for you today, and that's, that's gonna be a sampling of what some of the other towns are doing. And then we've also penned together a potential, I guess, legislation or code that would be, is for your consideration after today, you know. Duck, I think, is doing a really good job of common sense of understanding in their situation, if people are just trying to get to the beach, they're allowing the standard carts. I wanna reemphasize, I'm not saying that here today because the bypass is involved for a lot of folks, and I don't think it should be crossed in any kind of cart. KDH Town, Safety Standards and Revenue by Permitting. I propose that we require any carts to be a self-regulated type of form that would be done, I would hope, through downloading a form off the internet, on the KDH website, self-regulated, self-assessed, and then turned in to the Finance and Tax Department. So I remember with my days serving on the CAC here, I mean, our staff is so overwhelmed already, I don't wanna come here today and have them all hate me, and, and think I'm adding another thing on the pile. But I do think with the guidelines we're gonna give you, seat belts, steering, horn, you know, certain, certain safety requirements, the experts that live here in your neighborhood, we can kinda guide you on what we think would really make those safer carts. The standards that we're recognizing and recommending, they're above the norm. They're not the way you buy the cart when you get it from club car. These are things that we would encourage you to require folks to add on to be safe back in the neighborhood. Those safety standards that I keep mentioning are no carts within 100 yards of the bypass period, no bike path sidewalk use, of course. Electric carts is my personal preference. I know that a lot of campgrounds, like in Hatteras, where we serve, they don't allow the gas carts. They're noisy, they get hot-rodded and stuff, sorry Terry, but, you know, they're just not great for being kind to our neighbors and considerate. Parking spots, you know, is what the state requires for a golf cart to park, I agree. Seat belts, headlights, taillights, turn signals. My proposal is, is that, you know, if you're on a 25 mile per hour road, which is really, you know, neighborhood areas, that you could use a standard golf cart with this proposed legislation. Maybe the west side is the way to just tickle the idea and start somewhere. A lot of communities like South Carolina, Hilton Head, Myrtle, all that, they're using the high-vis rear triangles on the carts. I think it's a great idea. If my kids were in one in a neighborhood, and there wasn't a nice reflective license plate, I would at least want that. Oh, the second last thing is, when you would buy something from the town, I would hope that there would be a sticker that we would affix. A lot of the communities, like Pirates Cove, when I go there and deliver a cart, they put a sticker on for the week, it has some rules and regs right there for the user to see on the backside, the sticky side, and on the front side, it says this expires when. In closing, you know, we're seeing them, you guys are seeing them, I think they're just gonna increase. Golf carts and LSV dealers, there's four opening up on the Outer Banks in addition to me that weren't here last year, that I'm aware of, as I scour the competition. So they're just gonna keep growing. The thing I wanna leave you with today is, LSVs, right now, anyone can buy, but so few can afford them. We're talking $50,000 to $20,000 ranges for the ones that I sell, that it's not good for the average guy, and, or gal. And I think if you just don't do anything, and just say, we just want it to be LSV, and the state's code is good enough for us on this, then you're gonna have them crossing the bypass. And if we do this, idea of neighborhood use and keeping them 100 yards from the bypass, it's better for our families. It's greener, and, you know, I'm not gonna beat that drum. I think we all get it. In closing, I just wanna say, Ben and I are here, if there's any questions, and our business cards are in the packet, if there's something you think of later, so.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, a couple of comments.
I see it from the Lowe's down the yard. I call them the big giant honey vehicles.
Yes.
I guess those are considered LSVs as well. It was really recent they started selling those.
And this looks like an off-road vehicle, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are not LSVs.
No.
Those are side-by-sides.
Those are side-by-sides.
And as I understand it, side-by-sides will be able to be converted to street legal vehicles.
Modified UTV.
This year.
Modified UTV.
Modified, right, right, right. And to modify the, one kind of thing about the LSVs, an LSV has a vehicle identification number. The UTVs, I believe, would have a vehicle identification number, just like a car, so you would register it, and it would have plates and everything. The stuff you see in front of Lowe's, I'm assuming does not have a vehicle identification number, you wouldn't be able to register it at the DMV. So it is a, it is a difference. And those are also, they're gas-powered, different motors, different.
Yeah, I'm not sure what Lowe's, has those in our market. You know, it's confusing to me, I saw them too. But I do know that the Polaris side-by-side type stuff, the state did, I believe in October, Dana, opened up, where you can convert that to a side-by-side vehicle. So I mean, you should be aware, those could come into this area. They could.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
What, isn't it gonna cost you more to, to get your fleet up to, I mean, since you rent these out?
Yeah.
So, so, you know, what's the benefit for your business?
Yeah, to be transparent completely, I mean, I would most certainly be paying the permit that the town requires for my carts to be used. I'm almost using no standard golf carts in KDH right now. Places like Pirates Cove, I'm sending them, Currituck Club, because they're accepted there. So I'm doing very few of the standard golf carts here, but my real benefit is I would be selling more. I mean, it's, I'm just gonna say, it's five people a week who walk in our showroom and say they live on the west side, and they wanna get a golf cart, and then it's a 20-minute conversation that you just heard me give about why they can't. So I can get them an LSV, and I do, but the So I can get them an LSV and I do, but the guy who can do the $20,000 one is, you know, one in few. So these folks have something they bought from a golf course or they've bought from a regular old golf cart dealer and they, you know, they want to get the kids around the neighborhood is kind of what I'm hearing. That's not every story, but that's, that's the common story.
Your business will be able to outfit them as well, like to these standards?
Yes, and to, and to put these nice safety features on, I will benefit from that as well. Because again, I said, you know, the average out of the box golf cart doesn't come with a windshield. Doesn't come with seat belts, but I think when my kids are in them, it needs to have them.
And to that end, all of our rentals have 95% of this stuff on it.
Already?
Yeah.
Because we believe that it's the best thing to do and, and for liability reasons and, you know.
So you sell them and rent them?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay.
And I would assume you're taking this presentation to Kitty Hawk and next head or?
Yes, sir.
Because I thought so. I don't know. We really have a different temperature, but if we were going to move forward with something, it's always great to be able to align share the messaging and make it less confusing for visitors and folks that live here.
Great idea. Thank you.
Have you already done that? Have you already done that?
No.
We have not.
No.
Okay, we're starting here first.
I had to come in front of my friends.
Just three things. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I think it's very good. I think, I think it's something that we really need to go with, but three things. You got a police chief sitting over there and you got a town manager sitting there and you got a town attorney. Once they're good, I'm good.
We'll discuss, I'm sure.
Yeah. I like the idea too. I'm a supporter. I'll make sure we do it the right way. It's already happening. In my neighborhood, there's a couple of them right all over. The public's there, there. This already exists and I think this, it's not going to stop. So and compared to, I mean, we've seen the proliferation of the battery powered bicycles, they're everywhere. Yeah, they're, they're fast. I think, well, of course, they're safer option. So I think we absolutely should.
You know, I bought my first electric vehicle in 2014 and so I follow that sort of thing. And I think as the number of vehicles that are electric come on the market, that the creativity of every size and shape is coming our way as well. So this, that won't be the only thing down the line. So good to get in front of it. We appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
All this together and they got a lot to look at and think about. We got your phone number.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Well, new business includes, number one is recommendation to amend the Ocean Acres wastewater flow allocation. Please.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I figured you would.
We updated our flow allocation for wastewater back in 2008. Development in Ocean Acres neighborhoods has increased greatly. Excuse me, I gotta get my. Public Services Director Steve Albright's attached memorandum highlights the growth in capacity levels with no growth in the commercial allocations and reduction in the residential allocations to 880 gallons. What we would like to recommend to the town is that we combine the commercial and the residential allocations that are left into a single account with remaining capacity of 13,450 gallons. Authorize the capacity, sell to both commercial accounts if any need arises and residential accounts from the remaining combined allocation and maintain all of other policies for the sale of the capacity related to commercial and residential customers. Steve is here if you have any, and Derek, yeah, both of you, if you have any questions. I think the memo outlines where we are with this. Could go ahead and use up that allocation with the residential if the commercial accounts do not arise.
I was worried about, maybe I don't understand it entirely. I was worried about what, what happens if there's the allocation, I mean, if it's not separated, what if a commercial need comes up and wants to use it all up? Isn't that a problem? No. Must be misunderstanding this.
I mean, that could happen, but we haven't had any requests. I mean, and it has, it has to be in the senate, in the
In the district, a little area. There's not a lot of places that could happen. Okay, as long as you're not, if you're not worried about it, I'm not worried about it. Just trying to get my head around it. You have a question? It seems, seems, if you guys think it's the right thing to do, put together, it makes it easier than I'll means.
Well, it's, it's not complicated the way it is. It's just that we didn't want someone in Ocean Acres wanting to build a residential property and we not have the wastewater capacity for them.
So really the worry was running out of.
For residential.
Right. Because I guess the, the purchase originally was based on most houses would be three bedrooms. And now, of course, larger houses are being built and we're renovating and adding rooms and but you guys know the pattern. So we've got many years before we're going to run out of this. Even though I thought there's 20 undeveloped lots and then because anybody could add another bedroom, but we'll revisit that later if we have to, right? If there's anything else you'd like to tell us, otherwise, you know, I think we will take your recommendation on that unless you guys have questions.
Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'll make a motion of approval that we approve the recommendation to amend Ocean Acres water flow allocation as presented.
Excellent. We got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Do we have a second now here? Mr. Gray, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two of new business is Bay Disposal's rate request. My understanding is that one was approved in the past and then they didn't actually do it.
Yeah, this is right before the pandemic and I think they just held off. Just kind of like so many other things, we just sort of backed up. But they are asking now for a rate increase to 1320 per cart, per month. We've been, have enjoyed a 14-year relationship with Bay Disposal and recycling. They provide a convenient service to our citizens who want it without imposing service on others that prefer to use our own recycling center. If the rate increase is approved, it will only be the fourth increase since the company entered into the franchise agreement with the town in 2008. Staff recommends, Board of Commissioners approve the rate 1320 per cart, per month for subscription type residential per side recycling program and a motion would be in order.
Super, yeah. All right, we got a motion on the floor. And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Third item. Third item of new, new business is appointments and nominations. We have three to look at. I know that we've had a lot of messages going back and forth and we have a few people that have put their name in the ring many, many years ago. And although we probably had an opportunity to get to this earlier, we would have done a little more digging. But if I understand, but I've talked to each of you individually, we might want to give ourselves a little more time, do a little advertising and reach out to those older applications, see if they're still interested before we offer to somebody who don't really want it anymore. So we'll just, we'll update that list and if that works for you guys. Is that all right with staff?
Yes, sir, certainly. And that's for the
The first two.
First two.
On the, on the third.
I have, I have a recommendation.
That's great.
I, I would like to, for the North Carolina Coastal Resources Advisory Council, I would like to nominate Commissioner Winley. Commissioner Winley is proven a very excellent chairman of our CAC. I think he would be a very active person involved in that. I think that he's got a lot of good qualities as far as his stewardship of the environment. I think he would be a good fit.
Sure. Couldn't have said it better myself. Commissioner Winley reached out to me as well and expressed his interest and it's a big responsibility and a great group of people to work with. And I'm sure that you will represent as well, as well as bring back information from a bunch of smart people up there. All right, so there's a process, I guess.
Resume your question.
But was that, was that a, that was a motion? Is there further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Nomination is unanimous, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your willingness to serve. Item four of new business is an offer to purchase a small piece of oceanfront property that was gifted to us some time ago. It is not buildable. You can't build a house on it, I guess. But it is across the street from the first estate property that is offering to purchase, right? So anything else you need to know about that? Like it has to go through the whole bid and?
It does. And it's kind of, it's kind of unusual in that, you know, it has to be contiguous with the lot across the street. And as it happens with this particular parcel, there's two lots across the street that it's contiguous to. It's kind of, I'm going to use one of those big words, cattywampus.
Cattywampus, technical term. So does that mean that it's in question whether it can be done or?
No, no, it's not in question whether it can be done. It just might make someone else interested in it as well. Because you do have to.
Publicly offer it to both parties.
And there's the upset bid process, which would allow, if that occurred, it would allow them to become bid as well.
And then, you know, in some discussions that I've had was the interest was for that property owner to build a dune crossover. And as it's been explained to them, they would need to do a survey of the current property and this piece of property to make sure that they could do the crossover and still meet the lot coverage.
Right, if they're backed up and they wouldn't be able to, but if they had a little extra on the lot coverage, they could do it.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. All right, as long as they're aware of all that. And the only question I have was I, I don't remember all the rules off the top of my head. The upset bid process, was it $5,000 increments or is it a percentage, isn't it?
I think it's a percentage.
It is. It's a 5%.
5%, yeah, I was going to say it was 5,000. That might be tough. They only offered 5,000. Oh, yeah, 5%. Okay, so we will.
Maybe a minimum even, if I'm not mistaken. I have to reread it. But many times when you have such low bids, if 5% doesn't hit the minimum, then they still have to make.
This is such a, this is such a low amount.
Yeah.
Anyway, so it's not something we're typically.
Yeah, it's unusual in a lot of different ways. We shall see how it plays out. If the other neighbor is not interested, then no problem. But if they go back and forth, it could be once. All right, so did we need a motion there?
It, it, it's the desire of the board to proceed with this.
Does anybody have any?
Well, no, I mean, there's no, you know, no desire or intent to do any access or anything with it or public.
For the town now.
Yeah, for the town.
No room for any parking or?
There's no, there's no room for parking. If you were to build a crossover, there's, you just dump right back on NC 12. I don't think it would be very safe for the town.
No intent though from the town, right?
No, but that doesn't mean you can't just leave it like it is. There's several lots up in that area that are owned either by the town or by the state. Meredith, help me. I think this particular vacant lot has like two houses to the north that, I remember looking on the, or one to the.
There's two to the north and there's one to the south. And that lot was gifted to the town.
Right, but what we had talked about was those three houses, if something were to happen, those lots would not be buildable either.
Correct. These lots are an unbuildable lot.
Rebuilt, I'm sorry, rebuilt, yeah.
Yeah, if, if anything in pretty much the north end of our town, if any of those houses are damaged greater than 50%, they would fall under the CAMA 50% rule, would not be able to be rebuilt. The land would be deemed unbuildable. That's what this is. And even with beach nourishment, we have a static line that was established prior to beach nourishment being done, which, i.e. the name, the static line doesn't move. So beach nourishment doesn't make them buildable with more sand. There's a, there's a static line that's been established by the Coastal Area Management Act. And so the only thing that could be, it could be used for is access to the public beach.
Who gifted this lot to the town?
Let's see. Roberta D. Parish, unmarried, from Kansas.
Back in 2001.
2000. May 15th, 2001.
And no intention stated by them.
That's what I was thinking.
No, that's.
They have an intent to just leave the lot.
That's why we've, we did the research on the, on the deed. Speculating, it was unbuildable, there wasn't anything they could do. They live in Kansas.
Why don't they want to pay taxes?
Well, they want to pay taxes, even though the tax value is only 5,400, why would you want to pay county and city taxes on something you can't do anything with?
And is the tax deduction be gifted to a municipality?
Some of the, some of those properties, and talking with Meredith, some, particularly the ones that are on by the state, may have some, may have restrictions on them, but this particular lot did not.
And we have accesses nearby that already.
Yes.
Yeah.
We typically wouldn't put a public access in a mid-block situation because then you're promoting people to walk up and down the edge of the bypass, a beach road. And it's just a safety issue. We, we tend to put our accesses at right of way ends so that there's crosswalks and things like that to safely get people from one side to the other.
It just, it just is no longer, would no longer be public. It would then be privately owned. That's their situation.
Yep, so we're looking for a motion.
The three bullets that I, that I outlined.
Yeah, to authorize direct the town manager to vest the proposal for compliance, negotiate the terms and get the process started with the upset bid process.
Yes, sir.
I think you just say, so moved. Okay, I guess I made the motion. You got a second. We usually don't do that, but we'll do that. That is fine. Any further discussion? All right, hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Get out of there. Alrighty, committee reports. Anything exciting happened in the last, oh, we just jumped in this first. Sorry, got, got out of place there.
Yes, I'd like to invite Sue Kelly, Chairperson of CAC, to listen, update them all.
Charlie, good to see you.
Thank you. Hi, Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. The first thing I want to mention is Saturday's trash attack. It was great. It was excellent by everyone's estimation. We had a very enthusiastic crowd. After two years of hiatus, it was nice to see the folks come out. And also there were a lot of other things going on as there are every weekend this time of year. So I was impressed. I worked Zone One and the folks that came out to Zone One really did a job. I mean, they went a long ways. I think the gentleman, Dennis Poole, actually went almost to the Kitty Hawk line and back down the other side. And so it was great to see all that enthusiasm. Sandy Monklin and her co-chair, Chris Merrick, who you all saw tonight, did a fabulous job organizing it. Sandy puts this thing together without having to hold a meeting, without having to come to a place and sit down and talk about it. She's that well organized. The other thing I have to mention is that we could not do this without our town staff. They were there in large and significant numbers. They did a fantastic job. And so much of the work that makes trash attack happen is due to our staff. So we thank them tremendously. The next thing I want to mention is our tree project, our live oak project. We have been in the last few days giving out to all the people who applied, which was just over 100 people. We were able to, thanks to your support. We were able to, thanks to your support, um, have a tree for all of them. And most of those trees have been picked up. Um, I know of one woman who wrote us a really nice letter, saying how thrilled she was with her tree. It would be our hope, and the Community Appearance Commission with your support, to do this every year. To have a hundred trees available, at least a hundred, that's our goal number, for every year available to our citizens. Think what that means, these live oaks, these beautiful trees, our town tree. Um, that'll make a real difference at some point, a hundred trees a year, so we're thrilled to do that. So, the Community Appearance Commission, meeting before last, decided to spend some time planning, thinking about what the future holds for us. Now, clearly, we have trash attack every year, every two years we have the Community Appearance Awards, um, and the tree project. These are ongoing things that we'll continue to do with your support. Um, we have on our agenda to look at the way we determine the Community Appearance Awards and redo the criteria, and bring a new proposal to you about that. Not to eliminate or really change some, but maybe change how we rank them, the process we use. But, so we spent some time, um, in our meeting before last, generating ideas, things that we thought might be, meet our goal, which is to enhance and improve, when possible, the beauty of Kill Devil Hills. Um, we came up with a list, we prioritized four of them. And then at our last meeting, which was just this past Thursday, um, Assistant Planning Director Cameron Ray came and talked to us about our four things. And what we found out is that those four things are really in the works already, that they're already part of the process. Um, that there are things being done around them, or in one case, we're dependent upon the, um, the state. For example, one of our ideas was we'd like to see something with, uh, maybe a median in between, on the bypass. Well, that's already, uh, something that DOT has decided to do. And then, once it's, when it's done, we can look at what would make it the most beautiful and make some proposals about what to do with it. That's down the road, but it's in the works, it's already been decided. So, what we thought then is that we should ask you, and in fact, all of us talk to people and ask them what they would like to see done in, in KDH. But I'm issuing a special request to the five of you, and also to our staff. What ideas do you have that you would like for us to investigate in the area of keeping the beauty and enhancing the beauty of, um, KDH? Everything we do comes from you, everything we propose goes through you. So, if you have ideas, uh, we would love for you to communicate them in any way that you wish. And if anybody has, um, any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but you usually don't.
I'll chime in real quick, we had a long discussion with staff, generating ideas and kind of filtering through, and feasibility became a little challenge, and if we don't wanna do anything representing the town that this board is not, does not support, and is not directing us to do, so... We've kind of hit a point where all of our, we've had to establish a lot of annual, bi-annual programs, we need something to do to work on. So, we're asking the board to tell us what to do. And, uh, so I know we had some talk in the, in our retreat about maybe leveraging the CAC to take recommendations for your beautifying sort of beach accesses, maybe doing a study. But, um, this is not something where we're asking the board today to decide, but we always like some direction, what can we work on to really get the most from the CAC? And the board wants us to do.
Right, and I think I couldn't, you know, I think that you really hit, hit that on the head that, um, we was looking through the minutes, which, wonderful job on those, by the way. It makes it, makes it sound smarter than, than we are, right? Does a great job summarizing, uh, but there's a lot of the good ideas we threw out in the, in the, um, in our retreat. Mr. Wimley mentioned beach accesses as being an opportunity. I think, um, we both like the rustic charm of it, but also don't wanna look like we're letting anything go. So, it's a bunch of beach access, 19 is it?
Twenty...
Twenty-one now, what?
Yeah, I think we, I think we actually have 27.
All together, right?
I think 24 approved.
Oh, yeah, I always think of the improved ones, but I think it's a lot to get your head around. So, if, uh, if your team there had some interest, then, uh, we love the idea of, and I think there's wide support from our, from our meeting to figure cost-effective ways that we can spruce things up at beach accesses, whether it be, you know, how we work showers, or what we do with sand removal, or vegetation, uh, to sort of stabilize things. I've always thought, all those showers, that water's, just they're running down the street, it should be, you know, feeding some plants or something. Uh, there's lots of ways to go, and nothing set in stone, but I'd love to put, set you guys loose on that. And then, uh, I've been working with Steve, investigating, uh, what we can do to sort of up the ante on the bypass as well when it comes to, um, just some of the rougher patches, there's places that could use a little topsoil, there's a place that you do some seed and some fertilizer, or seed, or, you know, lots of, lots of opportunities to think of how we present ourselves as a town on the main drag, uh, as well as on the beach road. Um, you know, the campus back here, of course, is beautiful, how can we leverage our great talent in that area to, uh, to share with everybody as they drive up and down our two main streets in the town? I'm sure we will also put our brains to other, uh, smaller ideas as well, because the little, the little projects are great too, when it comes to our public spaces at parks, um, there's all sorts of places to look for little projects. Um, I was a Boy Scout, my dad was a Boy Scout, always looking for projects that are, you know, something you could bite off and make a difference in one little spot, and then you do that again and again. So, uh, uh, we have tons of little parks, and all of them could use some love, one way or another. Um, any other thoughts on that? We will def, we know how to get ahold of you, so we will send messages your way and send to the committee. Thanks so much for all you do, I was very disappointed to not be able to make it to Trash Tech, I had work thing I had to take care of on Saturday morning, but I saw the great posts online, and like everybody had a good time. Thanks for all you do with that, and thanks to everybody that, uh, with the staff that participated and helped. And, uh, I'll make sure I have the day out next year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And boy, thanks for all you do. Another committee reports.
I have an update from the Board of Tourism. There is a public hearing on the Boardwalk for the Soundside Event Center, which is on April 14th at 4:00 p.m. And it will be held at the Sarah Owens Welcome Center, Rhode Island, so if anyone's interested would like to attend that, and I'll be there as well. Um, we are, I'm the Budget Finance Committee, so I have that meeting tomorrow morning for the 2022-23, um, budget. And, um, I also wanted to ask the, the board and Michael if we could consider asking, um, Board of Tourism Chair Tim Cafferty and the Director Lee Nettles to come in and present on the event center and what the concept is and sort of where it is in the process.
Ready to, ready to...
Very helpful, um, for, for all of us to, to hear that presentation. So, if that, if okay, maybe in the next couple of months, I know the next meeting is probably pretty busy with the forum, but if we could, maybe May, consider May.
Good. Yeah, sometimes the forum is busy, sometimes it's not, but it, it also is a good opportunity if there are more people here for the...
Yeah, that's a great idea, yeah, okay.
So if they're available.
Yeah, okay, I'll work with Michael and we can figure out a timeline, they'll be there, thank you.
Good luck there, ma'am.
Oh, and also, um, I know a couple of us attended, um, the Economic Summit last week, um, with Doug Griffiths, um, 13 Ways to Kill Your Community, um, it's, it was a great presentation, he did, he did a great job, did some, you know... It's an interesting take about it, obviously isn't really Ways to Kill Your Community, it's quite the opposite. And, um, so anyway, it was interesting to hear that presentation as well.
Yeah, entertaining speaker, former political person, you know, private life. Trying to share his wisdom of going all the way across the country, finding out what people are doing wrong, telling stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, that presentation pointed out that most small towns in America are struggling to get anybody to invest in them.
Right.
And, uh, we have a different set of problems. But we share with those places, you know, affordable housing and, and poor housing and that sort of thing. So he, he was, the basic gist of his book is to look at it, and if you, if you really wanted to ruin your town, what would you do? Then you say that, and you realize, oh, I need to do the opposite of that. So it's just a new way to kind of come at it with a fresh set of eyes, it's a good, good little exercise.
I wanna, I'll chime in, chapter one, don't screw up your water. Many creatures in the tap needs to feel a lot better, but, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, he pointed out that there are hundreds, I think, 300-plus communities that, that can't drink their water.
Wow.
And then there's a whole bunch more that can't pay for it because they got a whole bunch of debt over it. And we have almost no debt on our water system at the moment. So, uh, great stewardship of the resource of, of that service for decades and decades. Great leadership and a whole bunch of people that came for us, made sure we made smart decisions there, and on roads and other things. And have a lot to be thankful for, uh, where we are right now, our ability to go forward because of those that was done in the past. Wanted to mention about the meeting, if you email Amy over at the Visitor Bureau, they have, they will send you a link if you want to watch it virtually. Um, I can't make it, but I'm hoping to be meeting while I'm at work and listen with one ear, while I'm working. Don't say that, I put that on my...
Yeah, you did.
Tell them, yeah, you told everybody. You know what to tell them about this week, just kidding. Alright, um, Commissioner's Agenda, would you start down the same? Nothing, everything covered? Motorcycle is corrupt, got that?
I'll just, I'd like to add, I had the pleasure of attending the, uh, grand opening, and we're becoming for the COA...
Oh, yeah.
Manio Campus last Friday.
Yeah.
For anybody who has that chance to see it, it's beautiful, I'm really, really impressed. The, uh, it's the street value now, but every, you go through Manio, that is the spotlight building. And really excited to see how, um, you know, that campus is gonna grow, and all of them are getting stronger, and there's a lot to offer here in County, so a lot of exciting stuff.
Yeah, super great, yeah. Super duper, alrighty, if there's no more Commissioner's Agenda, the mayor has a couple of items. We've got a couple of resolutions and proclamations, the first one, uh, is our ongoing support for the Mid-Curtech Bridge, which you've been seeing in some other municipalities as well, um, as you noted in the, in the memo there. We first, as a town, voiced our support of this in a resolution 31 years ago this month.
What?
Really hard to get your head around that, wow. Was I then, not that old. So, we are doing that again, if, if you all come with me on that, I recommend approval of that. The second one is a proclamation declaring April, uh, 2020 Fair Housing Month, and, uh, we have some folks, Willow and... blanking, I'm sorry.
And what?
There we go.
No, no, no.
A few bits of history, probably, about how we got here and, and, um, history of the Fair Housing Act.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission members. My name is Jimmy Anderson, I'm the past president of 2020, past president of the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. I also serve as the 2022 Chair of the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Task Force. The association has now over 1,200 members in residential and commercial sales, property management, as well as lenders, insurers, appraisers, inspectors, and other affiliate members. With me today is our association CEO, Ms. Willa Kelly, whom I think just about everybody knows. We always, uh, have witnessed that she is so important to all of us at the association. The board recently approved several initiatives set forward by the DEI Task Force on Fair Housing and Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. That's why we're here tonight. The Outer Banks Association of Realtors is committed to ensuring that all prospective home buyers, sellers, and tenants are treated fairly and equitably, without discrimination. We would like to make, uh, to make you and the citizens of Kill Devil Hills aware that today, April the 11th, marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. That's big, isn't it? To bring further attention to fair housing, we ask that you join with us in proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month, and let's make unfair housing history. We bought a visual aid with us, yeah, Willa bought that with us. The National Association of Realtors put that out, see how happy they are? So, um, you have received a proclamation for your consideration. And, uh, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share this with you tonight, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, it was legal to discriminate way back then, but it's a problem that has not entirely gone away, so it's always good to bring attention to that, so, uh, I recommend approval of these items, and, uh, I will make the motion, because that's my new thing.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We now have Fair Housing Month, thank you so much for coming out, we really appreciate it, and, um... Keep moving my agenda away, I forget where I'm going. Alright, after the mayor's agenda is the town attorney's agenda?
Nothing for me, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you.
Town manager's agenda?
No, sir, not tonight, thank you.
I know we have some things under the consent agenda, we'll make a...
Yes, we do.
Amendment to that.
Okay, um, the minutes are the March 5th, 2022 retreat, the March 7th, 2022 regular Board of Commissioners meeting, the monthly report for February 2022, budget amendment number 14 to appropriate funds for the Meekins Field Project, recommendation for 21-22 lease purchase agreement, this is a total amount to be financed of $1,367,448.46. Um, this would be financed with Trusht Bank, who had the, um, favorable proposal, uh, fixed rate at 2.41% to be made in eight semi-annual payments. Approval of the consent agenda will record the attached budget amendment number 15 to record the annual lease for equipment vehicles, and the accompanying resolution. The town attorney will review and approve the lease prior to its execution. Number five is recommendation for acceptance of streets and water oak subdivision. Um, accepting the streets, the water mains, right-of-way improvements, um, associated with Phase 2 and 3, which also will make them eligible for foul bill funding, adopt the traffic map revisions to reflect the improvements, and adopt the revised foul bill map to reflect the improvements. Number six, we discussed earlier and has been pulled. Number seven is a resolution authorizing the disposition of certain personal property by private sale. The town of Manio has expressed interest in purchasing a KDH garbage truck that is eligible for surplus. The town of Manio is considered an entity carrying out a public purpose, and the statute allows for this disposal of this property through private sale pending the adoption of a resolution. Approval of the consent agenda will attach, will, excuse me, will approve the attached resolution and authorize the town manager to negotiate with Manio Town Manager on the sale of the truck. Staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended with the removal of that one, I... Have a motion on that one?
I'll second that.
And a second, any further discussion? How sad, I hope some of those vehicles have been considered, are electric, see? Moving in that direction at least, at some point. Um, and I'd like to express my gratitude for Manio taking our hand down. Nice skill of saying that. Alright, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, I'm gonna get crucified in this video. It goes worse than the West Virginia coming. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Alright, well, I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn because I just wanted to...
You're doing a great job of public comment.
Oh, second public comment, I almost forgot. One more chance for all the public out there.
Mayor, if I could have one moment?
Please.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening, I'm happy to announce that the Dare County Tourism Board has awarded the town of Kill Devil Hills the annual, um, fireworks grant for fiscal year 21-22. Uh, that's $12,200, and that will go towards our, uh, annual fireworks celebration at Long Pier on the 4th of July.
at long period on the fourth of July.
I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but you negotiated a good price.
Okay. It's good. People like us.
TNT for nothing.
Look, those guys like us, because we didn't cancel what everyone else did. They definitely threw in some nice ones on that one, right?
Yeah, that was impressive. Yeah, that was impressive.
All right, unless you guys have anything else?
Other than just saying thanks to our mayor, Pro Kim, for once, once she's got all these new roles for the tourism board, for bringing them to bacon.
I don't, I'm not on that committee anymore, unfortunately, now that I'm... I was on the steering, so I didn't really have anything.
Appreciate you keeping us knowledgeable about that stuff, for sure. So, if that big praise is on, I'll say I have motion, I make a motion to adjourn much later.
Second.
If we have a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.